I have nothing for her, but she called.
I'm watching.
Mr. David Mitchell left.
I'm so sure when she comes.
My Jenna bought me chip.
Really?
The teacup.
Oh, I saw that.
Did you get what you needed for your bidder?
Yes. Now I just got to get out there. And I thought I was going to do it this weekend, but he has the opportunity to go shoot a mountain lion, which will be stuffed and in the house next. I'm so excited. So today I told him, I said, "When you get this mountain lion stuffed, because you do a full mount," he gets one. I said, "Please do not get it sitting on a tree, up in a tree with another dead animal below it. Just get it stuffed. Don't get it standing up. Don't get it. Just get it like in a walking gate stuff." And he's like, "Everybody's getting their opinion." And I said, "Nobody's opinion matters except mine because I have to clean this house and be in this house more than 50% of my time, and I do not want to be with one that..." Other one, because he's been on me about moving out to the country. And I'm like, "I'm not moving out to the country if that thing's on a tree or standing upward."
Five thirty, I will call obedience to order, and I'd like to welcome you all. Like them? Michelle's on her way. Otherwise, here we are. Public forum. Come on in. Hello, good morning.
Hi, Michelle. You're on speaker.
Hi, Michelle. How are you?
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, everyone.
We're just starting.
School calendar, first.
Comments on the school calendar?
Jim? I just got a few questions. First, I'm going to express a disappointment that we weren't even part of the discussion on this. I didn't find out about it. I assume that you guys were voting on this until today. So I did fill out a recommend. When they sent them forms out, I filled one out. And I'm not sure how many people did, but I don't know if anybody actually read them.
Yes.
So I guess what I need to, what we need to know is what does a four-day school week, if this is what's being proposed, look like? When I ask that question, I'm asking about times, not for just after school. I'm asking questions about the activity routes. That is a big, big deal. Right now, if any of you know, our activity buses are getting back anywhere from quarter to seven to eight o'clock. If you move that back an hour, if you move that ahead an hour, we're looking at eight-thirty to nine o'clock with elementary kids who are already at the school in busing and in the school for 12 hours right now. It's a big deal. They have no time at home with their parents. They'll come home, get off the bus. If they're lucky, get a bowl of soup or something, go to bed. That's just the reality of it. Right now, that's how it is. They have very little time with their parents. But that's a, you know, and I'm wondering how we come to that without asking people. Next thing that I would ask is, do you know how this will actually affect us? And the question that comes up with that is, is that there will be a definite pay decrease for some bus drivers. Some of them are six-hour drivers, and that will take a day away, a week out of each day period. It'll be two days a week, I mean a day period, excuse me. We have a heck of a time right now attracting drivers. We're pulling principals out of schools to come drive minibus for us because if you're not aware, we're covering 13 bus routes with six drivers right now. And we actually took one away from Marla's today. She loaned us one for a week, which... So it affects all of the aspects of the school. A couple of the guys asked me, will this short our... I'm paid at a straight rate. I was, I haven't supposed to be a bus driver for a long time. When they opened up the elementary school, that's when our problems all started. I've been a bus driver because of that, because we didn't have nobody for that. And every year, it's always the same thing, as soon as we get enough. Well, we're not going to get enough because of the required CDL training that's, I don't know if the board's aware. We spent over $12,000 last summer, and we are short two to three of them now that have already resigned or may resign. Retention is a big thing because the cost of the school, about $5,000 an individual. As I stated, this could be hard for us. We're out till eight o'clock at night now. So on some of the pre-routes, for sure. And they basically have no life, like me. I haven't had a life for a long time, so... They come home, just like I was talking about, kids. I'm supposed to be taking care of my mother, and I can't get out because we have no drivers. I have to drive a late route. And I get home, have a little test, spend 25 minutes visiting with her, give her her medicine, and then everybody goes to bed. It's really that, that big of a deal. The later that gets, the harder that gets. Activities, I already mentioned that. Elementary students riding the buses, you're looking at... We have elementary kids that get on the bus at 20 minutes to seven now. If they're out for sports or any activity at the elementary or middle school for that, that matter, that's a pretty long date. We're looking at instead of 12 hours, 14, up to 14 hours. And who feeds them in the evening? You know, when they get home, parents might not be... Well, we know the situation with some of that. But it all comes into a nutshell where this is all a... In my opinion, if I was asked, and I stated that in my survey, that I would, I think this is a big mistake. I don't know if any of you board members were present when this first came up about 10 years ago. I was all for it until we started looking at everything that was involved because you're going to extend the day, not school day. You're going to get an hour of extra during the day. But it extends their busing times at night. And in my opinion, if this was put to the parents, it would be an absolute no because who wants a eight- or nine-year-old leaving in the morning at 20 minutes to seven and coming back and getting home between eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock? Bad weather is nine o'clock. So these are just a few of the things that... It could also mean a pay cut, as I mentioned. Yeah, I guess my, if my opinion ever mattered, I am asking that we consider the consequences for four days and remain with the five day. I'm hoping that any kind of questions anybody wants to ask, I'll do the best that I can to answer that.
What's that? Does that have a drought for a, speaking of anything beyond Mission and Hope Bay, I'm sorry? Does that have a drought to upper coming?
Right now, Kim gets back at about twenty after seven to seven-thirty. And that's leaving the circle at six forty-five.
What about two, pardon me?
Oh, that would be about 20 minutes earlier than that. That's all one route. And that's provided the roads are good right now. Everything's a disaster, so things can vary a little bit.
What about Oak Creek?
Oak Creek, when we have somebody, if they have to go out, as far as Frederick says, it's seven-ten.
And Chumba Village?
Okay. I meet that bus coming home probably quarter to seven to seven o'clock.
We have a lot from St. Francis?
Pardon me?
St. Francis.
Uh, yeah, and St. Francis is a seven o'clock to seven-thirty, provided that's, we only have to run that route right now. We're short nighttime drivers. So that's doubling up with the spring trick thing, so that could be as late as eight o'clock right now. Most of the time, seven-thirty, I believe.
But we're closer to eight.
What about Rosewood?
Rosewood's pretty, like mine, I do all the local here, and Rosewood... And that was part of that, what we were just talking about, the Spring Creek, Two Strikes, St. Francis. That was all on one bus, but we had to find a way to save a little bit of time. So we put a minibus on there handling that, and that's six-thirty, quarter to seven.
So Grass Mountains included and not Spring Creek, that one?
Yes.
No comments, questions, board? Anyone?
No question. I got eight days. You guys are going to be missing out on. Is that, is that what you got?
What's that?
About eight days, you guys won't have, eight days taken for the four days as opposed to the five days.
Well, I didn't actually look at, overall, I just looked at what if we go four days, it means that somebody's going to be short. And it'll, we have a split differential rate, a split pay for working hours versus busing, and the loss would be in the bus, in the busing part. They would lose so many hours, I couldn't tell you exactly how much because I wasn't aware that we were going to do this until today, so I didn't have a lot of time to look at that. Mark might be able to do that.
Apparently, we don't have any snacks or nothing like that during these trips, right?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Fourteen names did miss the bus driving gate.
Fourteen missed.
And that's our greater pay.
Any more comments from the... County committee? Did you want to do that in R or when it's actually on the agenda? As long as we're talking about it, can we just go with it?
We haven't even done our agenda yet, approved our agenda yet.
No, most of it's approved agenda.
Second.
Move by Linda? All in favor?
Yes.
Michelle, are you on?
No, she, she told that call drop.
Four zero. Calendar committee?
Do you just wanna move calendar up then before the superintendent report?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay, I can share, so you received, there were two calendars posted for review. One is a proposed five-day, similar to this year, with additional PD days built in throughout the year. And then the other is a proposed four-day calendar. And I had Josh, we added this chart to your board packet because it helps look at them side by side. To look at the number of days, the number of instructional minutes, and how things lay out next to each other. So I, let's try to find this first before we kind of go too far. And one thing is, I wanna acknowledge that we did look at all of the surveys. I compiled all of the survey data and that went to the school board. And I would recommend also that as a district, we post, no matter what the decision is, that we post that survey data publicly on our website. So that we can say, hey, this is, these were the results of the survey data. And each group, it was a predominant preference, we had at least a sixty percentish preference for a four-day school week. They either agreed or highly agreed that that is what they wanted. And that includes the ESP group. There were forty-two respondents to that survey. And there were sixty percent of those respondents said they prefer a four-day school week. When we talked to Melissa, she went to the school board and asked about the fact that if we were to go to a four-day school week.
Remember, I asked you all this.
We wanted to ensure that bus drivers and other employees did not have a change in pay, a change in anything. So that we would ensure, or the board would ensure, that no matter what happened, that they would either adjust the rate of pay or have work for them on Fridays. So for, I mean, I throw this as an example, this is not a decision. But for example, we could have, we would like to have food service on Fridays. And so food service workers would still work and bus drivers could be delivering food on Friday. So they would get their same bus route on that day. So that would make up for that one day you're missing. That's an example, that is not a decision. But those types of things, to be able to provide, make sure we're not having anybody missing any wages as compared to what they're making this year. So when Melissa went to the school board, they assured that that would be something that would, would make sure everybody got the same rate of pay. As this year, they're not gonna be losing any wages. And so we know that there's a lot that has to be done after the fact. We know that there's a lot of decisions that have to be made if we were to go to a four-day school week. And that's gonna take a lot of people at the table, making, having lots of conversations about that. And, you know, that, we just know that the committee is not their job to make those decisions. It would be the job of, I think, a group of people, leaders at the table, to make decisions to what happens. If a four-day student week were to go into play. The most significant differences are more time for teachers to work collaboratively with each other and have work time to accomplish the task they need. And there's a ton of research on the fact that extraprofessional development and extra collaborative time, professional learning community time for teachers actually results in increased student achievement. Because we're talking about students, we're looking at data, we're making sure our instructional plans are ready to go. You know, we're making sure we're doing all of those things. And this, the four-day allows for more time to do that. We did build in those, some more times during the five-day week, can't propose calendar to do that as well. Because we felt that that was a little bit short last year. So in comparison, students in a four-day calendar, they go to school one hundred and fifty-six days. For a five-day, it's a hundred and sixty-seven days. For students, the time on a four-day would be eight-thirty to four. For a five-day, it's eight-thirty to three-thirty, so an additional half an hour. For staff, for a four-day, it's a hundred and seventy-seven days, and a hundred and seventy-nine for new teachers. And they go from eight to four-thirty, so an additional half an hour on their day. And then it's a hundred and eighty-two, does that look correct? I thought it was eighty, but it's a hundred and eighty-four. Yeah, sorry, the staff, the five-day is supposed to be a hundred and eighty-four days.
Oh, there's sixteen hours.
Oh, with the sixteen hours, that's right. A hundred and eighty-two plus sixteen hours. Thank you, I was like, where am I gonna sit at? So it's a hundred and eighty-two days plus the sixteen hours for family, community events. And that was a big preference also for, we have a large family, community event plan that has been developed. And it requires time to work with, you know, to work after school. And we wanna make sure that teachers are included in that time and then it's just automatically part of their schedule. And so in both calendars, there is time paid for teachers outside of the workday to attend family, community events, which also includes parent-teacher conferences. So the four-day week includes twenty hours of additional time for parent-teacher conferences and family engagement activities. And the five-day includes sixteen hours of family engagement time and parent-teacher conference time. So for a four-day school week, there are seven point nine-two additional days, which count as, those would be, we have that many days, we can go before we have to start making up time for snow days. Also, in a four-day calendar, those Fridays that we are off can be used as make-up snow days. So when we get to that point, you could just like, if we miss a day, then we could schedule a Friday to make up that day. So there's less lost instructional time. For a five-day calendar, there are six point five-eight additional days built into that calendar for, you know, snow days and those sorts of things. And so in the bottom half of the chart is around instructional minutes and instructional hours required by the state. So we are, in a four-day calendar, the proposed calendar, we are one thousand and fourteen hours over the state requirements for hours in the school day. And that's for six, sorry, I should say that's six-twelve, just to confirm. K-five has much fewer hours expected. For a five-day, we're at one thousand and two hours over the state expected hourly rates. I'm happy to show you kind of snippets of the surveys, if you wanna see kind of a few things around the four-day, if that's something you're interested in, if you had.
Show us what the survey results were for the four-day for each survey group we did.
All right, so. Okay.
The graph?
This was the ESP survey results. So the blue and the red is strongly in favor or in favor of a four-day school week, which would include two days a month for professional development. They, the request was Monday through Thursday, that was pretty much a dominant thing across all of the surveys. Everybody said a Monday through Thursday week is their preference. About fifty-eight percent of the ESP respondents felt that they strongly agree or agree that it will improve student attendance. Similar results for improving staff attendance and staff retention. Let me pull up these other ones. This was the admin and professional contracts. So we're at about sixty-four percent strongly in favor or in favor. Twelve percent strongly opposed, twenty percent undecided. Again, Monday through Thursday was the preference. About fifty-two percent, oh, sorry, excuse me, six, I can do my math with a fast. Thirty-six percent were strongly agree or agree that it will improve student attendance. Thirty-two said they somewhat agree, so this was more mixed for this group. They're not sure about if it'll improve student attendance or not. Sixteen percent strongly disagree that it'll improve student attendance. About sixty-some percent said that they strongly agree or agree that it will improve teacher, staff attendance. Not just teacher attendance, but staff attendance. And about fifty-five percent say that it will attract more staff because of the multiple three-day weekends built into the calendar, more small breaks. The one concern was about the time. And so they preferred adding the time to the end of the day, which is what we did. And then another concern was actually in the staff one, which let me pull up. Just having up earlier, where I'm gonna go. There it is. Sorry, let me click. All right, sorry, this one does not look as pretty, I haven't had a chance to convert it into a nicer format yet. So eighty-six percent were in favor or strongly in favor of a four-day school week.
This is our?
This is the staff.
Staff, okay.
And again, Monday through Thursday. Between sixty-four percent strongly agree or agree that it'll improve student attendance. Greatly agree, strongly agree that it will improve staff attendance and staff retention. The one concern is how many days off are we going to allow them to have, on, teachers to have on those PD days? Because one concern we have right now is that teachers are taking off a lot of those professional development days, so that kind of defeats the purpose. So we would like to, if this goes forward, we would need to consult, obviously, in negotiations with TCA, determine what that looks like for expectations for staff to attend those, you know, their professional development days.
Can I ask something?
Yes, please.
If you look at the, the references, the four-day compared to the, if you look at the staff in-service days, they're from eight to two.
Oh, yes.
So more than likely to attend an in-service that isn't gonna be eight to four all day, I think?
Yeah, those, those days are shortened, which is nice. Also, you're not, you're not there from that eight to four or eight to four-thirty. So it'll, I think it's a little more appealing to be done early on a. Let me show you now the, the community results.
This was our community and parents, correct, Krista?
Correct. So of the, there were two hundred and fifty-four respondents, so that we had a really great turnout. I thought that's about ten percent, if you think about sample size of the number of students that we have in the district, a little over, actually. And so I felt that was a really good response. A hundred and ninety-seven of them have children in school. So almost eighty percent had children in school that were responding to this survey. We had a nice range of schools represented, represented, where Todd County High School was the greatest at forty-three percent. Again, grades were a mix across the board. And so I felt like we weren't just getting a sample from one set of students or one set of parents. When we talked about their calendar priorities, this was kind of at the beginning of the survey, before we even got to a four-day school week, their priorities were including more small breaks throughout the school year and ending the school before Memorial Day. We know with the four-day option, we can't meet the four-day, or we can't meet the Memorial Day request, but we can meet the more small breaks throughout the school year. All right, sixty-two percent of participants are strongly in favor or in favor of a four-day school week. Seventeen percent were undecided and twenty percent were opposed or strongly opposed to a four-day school week. We also asked, it said a four-day school week means that school days may be longer, school breaks may be shortened, and more days may be added to the end of the calendar year. Which of these would you be willing accept, to accept to have a four-day school week? And there was kind of a range, but every, there were thirty-eight percent were willing to accept a longer school day. It's kind of a given, you can't have a four-day student week without having a longer school day. But I will say that thirty-one percent said none of these was appealing to them. So fifty-one percent of respondents strongly agree, strongly agree or agree that a four-day school week will improve student attendance. Twenty percent said they disagreed or strongly disagreed. When asked, will a four-day week impact my family in a positive manner? Fifty-seven percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed. Nineteen percent respondents said disagree or strongly disagreed. And then we asked about childcare methods, because that was one of our greatest concerns about childcare. Forty-three percent said they had, they didn't need any childcare. Fourteen percent said they would use other family members. Eleven percent said they did not have access to the childcare that they need. Ten percent would rely on older siblings. Nine percent would use a paid childcare provider. Three percent would alter their work schedule. And ten percent included other things that they would do, like somebody's already home all the time, that their child would go with them to work. But that, and then some said that they would need to take off work. The greatest concerns with the four-day week option was the longer school day for students. Concerns about extracurricular activities and food service on non-student days. Just any questions about the survey results?
Did you do the student one?
Oh, sorry, no, thank you.
Cause we did, we did, we did survey our students, what was it, fifth through twelve?
Yeah, six-twelve.
Six-twelve.
Oh, let's see.
May I ask a question on that? Um, did, did, in the surveys, I understand that you informed them about the longer date. It's pretty obvious that that would have to happen. But did, did that include telling, labeling the possibility, if their child is in extracurricular activities, that it may be nine o'clock before they get home at night?
That was not included in the survey.
I would ask why? And that, that, that's where I, when I made my opening statement, my, my first comment was, I was disappointed that we was not even consulted on any of that.
I don't have any.
I don't think it came up in the discussion, did it, Anthony? We, we talked to you because you were, you know, what you, you know. If some of the kids would come in earlier and we would do an early practice and then we. if some of the kids would come in earlier and we would do an early practice, and then we would only have that one late practice.
Yeah, I think we just put it to a building decision.
Yeah.
And then even then, you still can't have a, a survey question to such a small, select data with athletes in different buildings. It's, it ranges from elementary, you have a lot, high school, you have very little, so it's, I don't think we even covered it in the survey at all. Or even talked about it.
No.
So for the students, there were two-hundred-and-seventy-one respondents in grade six through twelve, and they covered all of the different grade levels. Um, let me go to the... When I asked to rate their interest in considering a four-day school week for students, fifty-one percent said that would be amazing. One-eight, almost thirty percent said we would like, they would like that, so that was the majority of students. There were seven percent who said, I do not want a four-day student week. And there are comments, for students who did not want a four-day school week, they mentioned they would miss their friends, they didn't have anything to do on that day, that they were concerned about, you know, like just not having anything to do, and being at home by themselves or something like that. So there were some, you know, legitimate reasons why they were concerned about not having, being in school for that fifth day. They also agreed that they would like a Monday through Thursday if a four-day week was considered. They understood that, like they said, if, the question was a four-day week means that students would make up any snow days on days when students were not originally scheduled to be in school. Knowing this, would you consider a four-day school week a good option? Seventy-six percent said yes. Also that if there is a national holiday, that that day would be used as the day off that week, they said yes. Eighty-one percent said yes, that's fine. The areas of concern were the longer school day for me as a student, and that was seventy-eight percent. And then seventy percent were concerned about shortened holiday breaks. So, and I should say, here's what I want to say about this number. This is a very deceptive number. It's adding, this was asked like three different questions, like rate number one, number two, number three. So this is the sum of those three questions. That's going to make sense, so they're not adding up to a hundred. When you look at this data, you're like, this doesn't make any sense. So this is a sum of three separate questions. They had to rate their top priorities, and these are the two that rose to the top. Two priorities were a longer school day and short holiday breaks. And I included appendices with comments, so you can go through and look at all the comments for...
We got, you sent that to us.
Yeah, so it's in your...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I read through mine.
I can see.
I guess...
So that's what summarizes, yeah, the, the data.
I guess I would just like to thank the calendar committee, because those were some long days and some, our long evenings, where we went late, and they all came. And sometimes it got a little contentious, I will say, because everybody kind of has their own opinion. There was a lot of compromising. They all worked really hard. But I think when we kept coming back to where we couldn't make a, you know, we decided as a calendar committee that some of the questions that were brought up weren't for the calendar committee to find an answer for. That was best for the school board to find an answer for once they decided on the calendar. Because the task of the calendar committee was to create a four-day calendar choice and a five-day calendar choice to give to the school board for them to make the ultimate decision with all of the survey data that they received. And I just want to thank all of you, because you gave up your time and you could have been at home. And I'll thank Sunny for the popcorn. Anthony, Tess, Barb, Shiloh, Krista, and Terrell. It was, it was a task. So I want to thank you all and invite you, because you were part of this, if any of you, of you would like to say something.
I think after all the meetings that we've had, my personal recommendation to the board would be if you choose a four-day calendar, to create a task force to go through all of the ins and outs and the questions that we had as a committee, because it's very extensive. It's way more than just saying, here's our four-day calendar, let's deal with it. So that's my recommendation, is that you create a task force to dive deep into it.
I agree. It's going to take a, a, you know, really extensive group of individuals and leaders in the district, if that's the option you choose, to then make really smart decisions for everybody involved.
Sunny, got anything? Tess? Something? Shiloh's not here.
I would add that it's somewhat like when we made the virtual plan, I reached out to all the different groups. You can't just look at this and even guess, you know, some of the things you're going to have to determine down the road. We have so many different groups that, you know, we have to consider. And until you get into it, you know, that's when you're going to have to make the decision. So there's some unknowns with it, and we just need to go forward knowing that. That's a concern I have, because it's the same with, you know, the, the plans we come up with, they're, they're fluid. They're, you know, something that you're going to have to continually work on and update.
I guess my thing is I looked at the survey results, and we surveyed every group possible. And more than fifty percent said they were in favor of a four-day school week. And this might not make me the popular person in the room, but we know nationwide that we have an educational shortage in all areas of education, from bus driving to teachers to administrators. But we know here in Todd County, we have an extreme teacher shortage here. And we know that we're competing against other surrounding schools that are four-day school weeks. And that, and we're going to retain teachers and attract teachers. We got to provide a better deal than what they're providing. Otherwise, we're going to start losing more and more teachers. And it has to be something, and I think that we have to value our teachers' times for that professional development, because, and give them that time to have that PD, to have those building meetings, to come together, especially when we're talking about bringing back pacing guides here. Those science teachers across the school district got to be able to meet. Those math teachers all got to be able to come together so that our kids can benefit. And I guess I have to look at what's the educational value for our kids and what's going to better serve our kids. That's what I...
Thank you. This one's for the bus shop. What time, what time's the pickup for rolls, but I was going to go down a list again, because I'm looking at the time. How many people rode the bus before?
I rode it from Parmalee and here, from He Dog School all through my school years.
Every, every day it changes. Every day it changes. It depends on if somebody comes to work or if we can get somebody to drive that route. So this year, we really struggled to try to get some, 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 something normal in order of me. So it's a, it's a struggle and delay, so some days it's...
Oh, yeah. We come back to what I was talking about earlier, you know, we started the year with ten drivers and we're down to six.
I'm a secretary.
She's driving every day.
Every day.
If you're trying to call the bus shop in the morning, there's no answer.
So, I mean, we can inch the list of kind of times and dates, and we kind of put it out with Josh. Josh knows it. We put it out on the split-district website. It's a, it's a every day, it's, it's changed. It changes.
I appreciate that. I'm just asking these questions because I, I like data, but the data that really interests me and people is the families that have children on buses.
Yeah.
And then, and then like, that was part of the calendar committee's observations that have been really good too, because it's, you're also looking at the health of the child development, as far as their brains, how much they're eating nutrition-wise. Is there got to be a plan there for providing education? To me, it's a plus for a teacher. I would like, I'd like to, for at this time, but much of us teachers are at a bus back home and they'll get home at home. And students doing it. Alright, y'all?
Barb?
I can tell you, Sage, that the first buses usually leave by five forty-five to six AM. And it's within, I'm going to say a half hour to forty-five minutes of those kids to get out there, then start picking up kids. That means our bus drivers are up four o'clock in the morning, not getting home till ten o'clock at night.
That's what I meant when I said they don't have a life.
I guess, I guess I have a question for, for Chad. You're the administrator of busing, of transportation and maintenance. What are some solutions that we can get some of our bus drivers so that we don't have this problem?
There's none.
Is it a higher pay? Is it what?
Well, I think we've tried over the years, many different things. We've tried bonuses, we've tried, I mean, all options are on the table. They're all worthy of discussion.
Recruitment, retention, I mean it's...
Well, yeah, the CDL guidelines change. It, it's hard to get a CDL now, guys. It's super hard.
They said you're looking at five thousand dollars per license. And the school will have to pay that, because nobody else can afford to do that.
Have we looked at partnering with other entities here? Because we know that RSC, job employment and training, have we reached out to them? Have we reached out to the Tech Row office, because they have a list of people that they're always recruiting for different jobs around here? Have we reached out to SGU and said, you have some bus drivers? When you're not running your minivans or bus routes, that would be willing to come and do a route for us? I mean, have we tried any of that, to reach out to some of those entities and said, would you be willing to let us use your bus drivers for the importance of education? And we'll pay their salaries for that amount of time? Have we done any of that?
I can answer part of that. Yes, we have with the college. And that actually worked against us, because he played both ends against the middle and got a raise at the other side. And left. So, you know, Chad is correct. We have done everything that is possible, you know. We're, we're starting rates at seventeen seventy-five an hour. Experience could take that up to close to twenty-one dollars an hour. And, you know, I've been here for thirty-nine years and I make twenty-six dollars an hour. And we're starting people at within four or five dollars of what I took thirty-nine years to make. So, you know, we, and, and I haven't crabbed about that, and I'm not using that as a crab. I'm saying that these are the things that we have done, and I have pushed for them in, in our ESP meetings. I don't care if somebody has to make, make as much money as I do, because we need them. It's that simple. Linda?
Yeah, when I came into Todd County, we were into restructuring, which meant that teachers had to have a lot of professional development to learn what, what we expected them to, to do in our district. And we were very successful at it. Our teachers didn't like it at, at first, because we said, get rid of those basals. Start thinking like teachers and be creative. We didn't think if it worked, but it worked. It worked for years. Until we had different people come in and say, no, that's not how we're going to do it. Change is hard, but it can be done if you do have task force, if you do have people brainstorming and thinking outside of the box for once. And say, yeah, we can do this. Other schools are doing it. It's not that we can't, you know, we're looking at one department. When we should be looking at the whole picture. We have teachers who are begging for more collaborative time, for more learning. And we also have a lot of staff who take off. Our test staff attendance is poor. We've got to make some positive changes instead of being stuck in this rut that we're in. Cause it's not going to change. You get used to this, the same old, same old, and you don't want to do anything. But noth- nothing happens either. There's no progress. I'm in support of the four-day week.
I agree with what Linda said and what Barb said about that change, I mean, and, you know, there are so many variables. I mean, some of us, we've, you know, been to committee meetings on four-day, you know, PD here and there, but, I mean, like Linda said, this is in the best interest of our students. You know, and change, it may be, you know, it's not going to come easy if we opt for this. But having a task force and have all of us working, you know, it, it's not impossible. You know, it's... And, you know, I too looked at, you know, the surveys and all of the comments and everything, and it's, I mean, it's going to change.
Are you going to make a decision?
I got a comment for, if you want anything, for anything about, you know, looking at this and seeing it, you know, like, I know we have surveys. I know we have surveys here. Looking at eight-hour days that you, eleven-hour days that we get really upset if we have to work. But we need beyond our time. And we're asking the kids to sit on a bus or to spend thirteen hours with us. Thirteen hours with us. That's how long we're going to have children spend with us at the four-day week. And we don't even have a plan for that, but we're going to go ahead and move forward and do that like, like we know what we're going to do is good. I, I didn't come from people that thought about that, or we strategized, we knew it, I didn't find it. Where's this school psychologist in this? Thinking about how is this going to be health, health-wise, is it detrimental or is it good for us? You know, why are you resuming, but why are you rich right there? Look at our community. How far our kids have to go, get to one place. So, you know, I, I, I want a four-day. I, I asked the community to entertain four-day. So come with, come with, um, a good solid package for the things that, why even became a teacher? Why even became a, a, a board member? Must have looked out for kids and their health. Use my, to use my voice, to use everything I ever, I ever went through to speak up for them. So I don't, I don't support this until I can see some evidence that says that this is going to be good for, good for our kids' health. I, I just don't see that long of a day. I couldn't be, that's going to be for a kid.
I think there's an assumption that the day has to be that long, especially for elementary. That's a big assumption. There's a lot of things you can do, for example, I, I don't, I'll be honest, either way, with either calendar, I think we can make it work. But I do know, for example, for elementary athletics and activities, you don't need as many instructional minutes at the elementary level. You can do those during the day. Those kids can be ready to get on that bus as soon as school is out.
There's a lot of things that we can do.
Like, there are so many things that we have not thought, that I know we can figure out. If a four-day week is chosen, that does, because I agree with Sage, I don't want an elementary kid on the bus until nine o'clock either. But I don't think we would have to do that. So we can't, we can't make decisions assuming that what is currently in practice would be the same practice in the future, because I think we can do a lot better.
Another example with our, our sports at the elementary, we've been concerned about the way they've been going anyway. And we've talked about doing something different that could be done during the day or could be done on weekends, and you could still have the kids participate. So there's a lot of things that we can do. We can't be stuck with this. We can't do anything, because we've done it this way for so long.
I guess I'm going to just make this comment that the calendar committee is tasked to come up with two calendar choices. And then, like Barb suggests, if it's a four-day calendar, then a task force would have to be immediately created to start working on it and coming up with all of the solutions for these things. That was not, that's not what's asked of the calendar, the committee. Calendar committee's only asked to come up with two calendar choices, and they did that job. And I'm very proud of the job that they did. And the amount of time that we had to do... And the amount of time that we had to do it, because of the snow days, we didn't get to meet, our meetings kept getting canceled. So, I'm very proud of all of you. You all worked really hard on these two.
I'd like to ask the questions. Would you guys, did you guys involve like the truancy court and juvenile court in this decision? Like, you're giving these kids more time?
That's what the task force could do. Those are things that the task force could deal with.
You're giving them more time because we give our kids stuff to do throughout the week. You know, we always see there's more stuff that happens in the summer or we do that out during the, like with the truancy court, the juvenile court. I mean, did you guys ask them what, what they teach? Trivial Ed received the survey, so they were able to, Trivial Ed, but I'm, I'm asking like the truancy in the court. The, it's, truancy's part of Trivial Ed, so they would receive. And was their input put in on the survey? I didn't see what their, what their input was. It was an anonymous survey, so I don't know.
Could I make a comment on that?
Yes.
If you look at the side-by-side of the four-day and the five-day, there are, so they're really similar in instructional minutes because by this date, we need nine hundred and sixty-two point five hours. So, the four-day, actually, students are spending more time in school than the five-day. And that four-day has added thirty minutes per day to schedule. Those are the differences that I mean.
How are we gonna vote on this yet, because it's just one, most are gonna have two calendars.
You have to pick one, a motion for one. I'll move on the board.
Could I say something?
Go ahead, Michelle.
So, um, my opinion is that when I consider this four-day school week, I wanted to get, I wanted to see what the surveys turned up. I wanted to see what, you know, parents and what students and what educators and what everybody felt and I, I was kind of on the fence. I could go either way. I am like Sage, a little concerned. I don't like to see a lot of, I, I hate the thought of our children having excessively long days to the point where they don't have time with family. Because as much as school is hugely important in their lives, so is being able to spend time with families as well, family first. But I'm, if we can figure out a way to make this happen for our students, then I could, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence still. I haven't decided one way or another, but I'm concerned about children not having time to spend time with their families. But I can see pros and cons to both choices.
I think that...
So, I just, oh, I was just gonna say, I just, I think we need to look into some of these concerns, like the bus drivers. Their concerns are very valid as well. Um, I just think we need to think about what everybody said. I think we just need to digest this a little bit and think about what we're going to be doing if we make these big changes.
Going back to a decision, I mean, we've listened to this, we've seen the surveys and a lot of the data, listened to staff members. And I still say it's changed. I mean, we all know that it's changed. And, and it's not gonna happen just because we say, "Oh, we're gonna have a four-day week," so we have it. It's gonna take work, it's gonna take work from staff to do this. And it's not something that, you know, just the board members, I don't think are gonna sit here and just work on the calendar committee or whoever, the, the principals or whoever. But it's gonna take like a task force for someone to do this and work on this. My opinion.
I agree with it.
Any more comments?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the four-day school calendar and create a task force.
A second.
Motion by... All in favor to approve four-day calendar?
With the task force.
With, situation with?
But I also wanna stress that we need to do that right away. If for some foreseeable reason, we don't, we have a five-day, that is perfectly fine to fall back on. But I want, that, we're getting, by our own policy, we have to approve one by a certain date. So, that's my motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
No.
So?
I would still like to think on this just a little bit. I'm just gonna say no for now.
I'm gonna say yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you to the calendar committee for their words.
Moving on to superintendent report.
Good evening. So, it's been just a week, so there won't be a ton of stuff. But I just wanna remind everyone and parents that South Dakota is still providing the South Dakota Dreams online tutoring. You know, we're ending the third quarter here soon. Um, I'm hearing kids are starting to get motivated and work on things, but if they're struggling, that is a great opportunity for us. Um, Wednesday night, March eighth, we are, um, doing a webinar with the Cook Center on establishing healthy boundaries. And there is a flyer inside your packet, I believe it's the second, um, item in there. I would encourage you to, you know, use a QR scan and participate and want to see what they're like and, um, join in. They're pretty interesting, they're, they're interactive.
Are these just for like adults then?
No, I think anybody can join them. You just have to have the QR code, Mary?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and then there'll be, there's usually two counselors or two, um, a social worker. And each of the webinars where if there's questions or if they need us for something.
And they have like a doctor or someone that...
Yeah, and they can reach out to, to Cook Center themselves or whatever, too.
So, um, okay, could, um, like, of course, with an adult, uh, ten, twelve-year-old participate in this?
I, I, I can speak for the one I was in. I didn't, I was on a social media one and that was last fall. And it was really good. I think a middle school kid or high school kid could easily, it's, it's good information. I, I didn't get to watch or be a part of the self-part one, for example, but I will go back and watch that.
Right.
I think they've been really good, you know, I was in...
The advantage of doing it this particular night is it's interactive, so they might ask you some questions.
So, it's this Wednesday?
Yep.
And then where's the QR, is it?
Um, it's on the website, okay.
Yeah, go to the shop cutting website.
It's on the website and it's on our Facebook page. And we'll send out another reminder, all-call tomorrow evening. Um, because we have pretty good luck with doing the all-calls.
Could somebody put me on the all-call? Because I was on the all-call up until probably this, as soon as, I was on all-call this time and as soon as I got elected to the school board, I mysteriously got taken off the all-call. Not sure what that's about, but yeah.
I'm not on the all-call either.
Do you know that? I don't, I, I can ask Brian to do it, because I don't know how to. I, I do the all-calls, but I don't know how to put you on one.
I think they just gotta go ahead and make sure that they get the notification.
And I sent Brian my phone number, so he has it, okay.
I do know they're talking about body image, because I...
Yeah.
Sometimes I work K-12, I had some fifth graders come over last weekend. And they were talking about this, and Mrs. Boyd, um, so-and-so, they were kind of in trouble, boys versus girls. And I said, "So-and-so, listen, our body image." And I'm like, um, I, I didn't know how to, how to take that, so then I thought that...
Well, I guess it's a good thing because you see a lot of the younger kids, which I'm not a big fan of, and we did, and you had the one on social media. I see a lot of younger and younger kids doing TikTok or Snapchat. And, and I think that, you know, and they watch these things and they watch other, like, older, young adults doing it. And body image becomes a thing. So, that's why I said, you know, at what age is it appropriate? Because I think we have some of our younger kids that are, you know, I have some concerns.
I would say middle school, high school, also on their website for the Cook Center, they have many videos on, about any topic you can think of. You could watch videos all the time and, and it's with a psychologist or a doctor or whatever. And, for example, you could have like your kid or you guys could have individual counseling with them that is anonymous, nobody knows about it. They can call you, you know.
Well, I think it's a good thing and not that I'm like preaching Dr. Phil here, because I, I do watch Dr. Phil. And I just happened to watch one where a young girl, and she was like in the middle school, and she got into, her parents bought her her first cellphone. And she became obsessed with social media. And it took over her whole entire life, like doing the Snapchat, doing the TikTok, doing the, what's the other one that they do?
Snapchat.
TikTok.
Instagram.
Instagram.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And getting all of these followers and stuff. And then something went wrong along the, and unfortunately, that, that young girl felt the need to end her life. So, her mother was on there, you know, telling parents, you know, "Be very careful, be very vigilant about this."
Snapchat and, and TikTok are the two main ones, you know, and they will screenshot, they will do all, Facebook to them is kind of a...
It's an old person.
An old people, yeah. And, and so that's where some of the issues come, even from the schools, whether it's, you know, the bullying, you know, online and different things like that. And you wouldn't believe all the, what can come out of the Snapchat stuff.
I, I think I can. I watched it on TV and I was a little taken back and I thought, "What happened to Facebook or what happened to..." What was the one when you got, when guys were younger? There used to be one, was like a...
Myspace.
Myspace.
Yes. I mean, there were some, there were some other ones where, you know. So, I guess, I, I was just, you know, it's some good stuff. I would encourage all of our young people and our parents of young people to participate in something that's free.
On the site, yeah.
Dr. Carol's board before.
Yep, yep, okay. Um, activities, high school, track begins on Wednesday, but you need a physical.
Are you clearing the track off of the snow?
I said, coaches are gonna have to be very creative with indoor activities. Stairs perhaps, I don't know. Um, ACTs are March tenth, they need to register with Sunny. Uh, sign up for the college fair online is March thirteenth, and you also see Sunny for that. Prom is April fifteenth with the backup date of April twenty-second. Graduation is May thirteenth and senior honoring is May fifth and sixth.
I think the seniors are also planning a senior supper for their families. Check with Amanda.
Um, middle school is taking a break. Uh, elementary TCES, boys basketball at five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Rosebud, um, boys basketball. Cheerleading and drum group perform at home games. They're the sixth and seventh here in town. And the ninth, St. Francis is at home. Outlying Lakeview has a boys' basketball game Friday evening with Spring Creek and its parents' night basketball games at Bull Spring Creek and Key Dog Tuesday and Thursday parent night for Spring Creek on Friday. TCAS is having a junior senior job fair, March twenty-fourth. I think this is their second annual, third, second?
Yes, it's the second.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then the mission games, if the track is cleared, will be April twenty-sixth. So, um, I'll just run through what's in your packet and then we have some administrators here to report. So, the, um, virtual snow day is ready to go. This is what went out to parents and, um, the community, so I wanted you to see that. And then we have the other, um, document that you saw last Monday, that's for internal use. They don't need to know all the ins and outs that we need to do here. So, and then you have your, um, Cook Center newsletter and then there are several reports.
There's a sign there.
Excuse me? Yeah, that's with the high school report. Um, they were approved, they wanted to get a sign like the middle school has, uh, what do you call that, electric, uh...
Marquee.
Marquee, there you go. So, it's finally ready to go.
That was ordered quite a while ago, remember, we had that conversation. So, it's just taken this long in order to...
Yeah, and I just wanted you to see that it's, what it's gonna look like and it's, it's gonna happen, yes, so. Uh, with that, we have Leslie, Roberta and Marla's here, so...
Go ahead, Marla.
All right. Welcome. And just the excitement about the new school, right? The dirt works being done, you're gonna be talking about the budget, just, you know, just exciting for our parents. Also, just wanted to share, we do have two staff members at our school working on their doctoral degrees, which is really exciting as well. Um, first of all, goal one, partnerships. Um, at our, our student council just was able to raise money for pickle sales. They raised two hundred and eighty-four dollars to give Valentine Day treats to the White River Care Facility and the Rosebud Elder duplexes. Again, just building those important community partnerships. Um, at family conferences, forty-one percent, we had a hundred and twenty students represented by family members. Um, out of the two hundred and ninety-three, baseball games Carol talked about, we have fifteen players, seventeen cheerleaders and fifty-eight Rosebud singers. And again, just very well attended by our families, just a great time to just celebrate those kids. When you look at academics, just want to talk a little bit, oh, one more thing. Tribal and truancy has really helped us this year with our, our wraparound meetings. And I just want you to focus a little bit on the attendance. Um, February, we were at eighty-three percent. We went up three percent from January. We had eleven classrooms increase our attendance from January. We reduced the number of students from thirty-nine to twenty-one. Of those students, we had sixty percent are below attendance, so twelve percent to seven. And that's just a shout-out to our staff, working really hard, having our classroom team celebrate that and working with, um, tribal ed and truancy, just, um, building those community partnerships. Um, academics, eye-ready assessment, fall to winter. We went, um, our fall reading to our winter reading. We were able to have five percent additional students on grade level. We went nine percent to sixteen percent in math. Um, we increased by ten percent of students that were on grade level, um, one year below. Again, we're lessening that, we are just keep continuing increasing, nine percent for reading, seven percent for math. And then we're reducing those numbers also for those students that are below. We went from fifty percent, dropped that to thirty-five percent, had fifty-six percent for math and dropped that to thirty-nine percent. So, again, teachers are just really working hard as our students and our families and we have a whole quarter left to go. So, again, we're gonna go strong to the end. I already talked about attendance and again, socially-emotional, just continuing, Calta has been a great resource for us. Continuing to work on those proactive strategies, um, just utilizing those things for our students. Culturally-wise, the OSE, the Ochere Shakui essential understanding, we're using the Science Ignite curriculums. We also, the February tracker, we have Dallas Chief Eagle and Star coming. They will be working with our fifth graders, um, learning the hoop dance, making the hoop dance, working with our fifth grade girls, um, the fancy shawl and doing that dance at the end of our year walk GP, which will be on the twelfth. Amandelis has really worked with our students over the years in third, fourth and fifth, develop, developing those Lakota cultural strategies. When you get stressed, when you have to take that state test, when different things happen at school. And so, they'll be coming and working with our third, fourth and fifth grade students before that state assessment. And he has worked with us for the last couple of years. And he has worked with us for the last couple of years. Um, Coda the Warrior had to be rescheduled, but he'll be coming in May. The Dakota players are going to returning. When we did, um, auditions for the Dakota players the first time, two years ago, prior the pandemic, we had 30 students audition and it was, again, there were about 30 parts, but kids were like, what is an audition? Well, when the Dakota players came back, we had 116 kids audition for those parts. And Dakota players, they're like 100, they didn't quite know what to do. So I said, well, you gotta come back again because we have all these kids that want to do it. So they're coming back. Um, and so, and then the Raptors will be coming to celebrate, um, the end of the state testing on May 2nd. So again, just lots of things, exciting things happening. Thank you all for your support and your guidance.
Thank you, Marla. And I love, um, your Facebook page for your school. That's how I keep up on all your news and get to see pictures of all the kids. And how long has Dallas been coming to Todd County School this year? Can anyone?
Oh, and just.
Lita had, and the reason I ask this is Lita put the thing out with Star for, for the hoop. Lita Branda Sparr, and Jenna, who I'm going to age, is 30 now, remembered being at Martha Elementary and him coming and then doing a, and him teaching them. And they doing a program for the students afterwards. So he's been coming a really long time.
Those relationships are getting strong. You know, the kids are like, yeah. And, and it really helps, especially with that anxiety of testing, to have those tools.
Thank you, Marla.
All right, um, Spring Creek and He Dog. Um, at the top of my report, you can see, um, Spring Creek's attendance is at 76. And He Dog is at 78, which has increased from the last time I reported. And a lot of that is just due to, um, sickness, for sure. Um, under partnerships, um, just like all the other schools, we have hosted our, um, spring family chats. We had a great turnout, um, with the Spring Creek one. I think we had five participants, Mary? Very vocal. The way that we do the family chats in the district, I think really makes families comfortable because they're sitting at home and they're able just to, you know, chill out and share everything. And we're getting more males to participate, which I think is just pretty cool too. Um, He Dog unfortunately only had one participant, so this has been rescheduled to the, the end of April. Um, with academics, um, we, at our last in-service, teachers did a data reflection sheet. They started with looking at their whole class and seeing some of the bright spots as well as some of the places where they needed to do some more work. And then they worked individual with different groups of kids and being able to provide prevention, interventions and supports for them as we go into the next quarter. He Dog had a pretty good, um, and I don't know if you're going to, you shared this in your report, but He Dog saw a pretty good increase in their stretch growth by about, I think, 40% in reading. Spring Creek had a slight increase in reading, um, whereas in math, Spring Creek had a greater increase. And, um, and it was the flipped with, with He Dog. One of the things that I think is helping with these increases is having those instructional coaches that we've had throughout the year. Yes, it can be overwhelming at times because a lot of our coaches come back to back. But I, we've taken some time at both of the schools and prioritize the teacher need. So if there's a teacher who's really strong and responsive classroom practices, maybe Calta just doesn't check in. Whereas if there's a teacher who has a strong, uh, a different need in math, then the math coach will spend more time with them. We've seen that that is really helping. Socially emotional for He Dog, Ms. Mona is officially seeing, um, students now individually and she's also started developmental counseling with the curriculum that is provided by the district. And Ms. Mary came along to talk about Spring Creek.
I got, oh. No, I said I would. Yeah, with classroom counseling, we're doing the Fly Five. And I don't know if, if you all know all the groups, but, um, it's cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy and self-control. And there's four lesson sections in each of those. And then each grade level has different lesson plans related to that. They may have the topic of responsibility is taking care of your classroom and, and different things like that. But they do different things where, um, the older kids may have to do with security and learn. It's all different vocabulary and it, it depends on the, um, grade level that they're doing. And so like with my schools, because I'm at Lakeview and, and Spring Creek, um, we have multi-grade levels. And so I pick one grade level and within next year, we'll go to the, the next grade level for the, for the Fly Five. And, um, then one of the things that I like to do, because I really think it's important to, um, have the culture part of it involved, where I really try to use Lakota or indigenous stories. And I have throughout the years before we even started doing Fly Five. But trying to relate it, like maybe the next week, using that Lakota story or if I can relate it in with the, the lesson. Um, like for example, this week with the kindergartners, um, it was about their last week in responsibility. And I used, I referenced Thunder's Hair about being a good relative because just because you're taking care of your, the, in your classroom, you also need to be a good relative and take care of your friends or your T.O.S. in your classroom. Um, and we had already, earlier in the year, we had Miss Thunder's Hair, um, as a lesson anyways. And so that's why I just referenced it, so for that. And then, um, the other thing I do is like I have, we have the healing room. Um, and most of you, when you were out, out at the last meeting, board meeting out at Spring Creek, you got to see that because I made sure you came in and saw. And so it's called M'Chosni Chantay Tiki. And there's a lot of Christmas lights and sensory, and Play-Doh and Legos. And it's very calming and things like that. But also our classrooms have, um, healing corners at both schools. And one of the things like at Lakeview, so a few weeks ago, we had, we had a calming, we had a healing corner where I did, where I did counseling and everything. But each of those classrooms also has their corners as well. And so they're, they're a work in progress and it's come. Um, and then we had an issue with the building and so things have changed a little bit. But I will be bringing, like for the individuals, I'll be bringing, um, like sensory toys and different things to use with them while we have individual counseling and then they have things in their classroom. So yeah, it's like the Christmas lights, they have salt lamps, they have aromatherapy, there's, I have a sea animals that float, um, plants. I still have the, this 10 years old this year from school counselors week. It's still alive and I haven't killed it with the help of some other people. So yeah, that's, and we're, we do a lot of different kinds of counseling, whether it's individuals, we have self-regulation, there's crisis counseling. I will say that I do, I'm also the exit case manager at Spring Creek. And so sometimes, um, we have kids that are referred out to like Southern Plains and stuff because I have those responsibilities as an exit teacher. So, um, but most of the time I, I try to get to everybody and, um, things like that. So, and then you have the duties as a sign, so, um, we keep, I, they keep me busy, so not out of trouble, so. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
In regard to goal four, um, staff are continuing to track their OSEU implementation with the track that is provided from the curriculum directors out of her office. On the 15th, at both schools, um, we would like the teachers to sit down and do like one large K-8, um, OSEU unit. And also to be able to, hopefully they can do some type of field study. We did the same thing last year at Spring Creek. And that could range from going to pick Sage as a kindergarten kid and then actually taking a trip. Maybe you're an eight grader. But something kind of like what Marla said, celebrating when you get to the end, uh, you get to the end of the year testing and all that potential. Spring Creek is fortunate that even though we lost our Lakota teacher, we had a community member who was going to volunteer. And she actually stepped into that role, so this is a long-term sub. So they get a Lakota teacher that is there three days a week, but she actually does classes on Friday. So she gets to see everybody. Um, we hope to be starting some larger projects, our projects once we find, um, our missing materials from today. Staff needs, we're still looking to fulfill, um, the Spring Creek teaching position, which would be a four or five ELA teacher. And He Dog is still, are, we're looking for a fifth grade teacher since we lost the one at the beginning of the year. Anything to add for Spring Creek?
We have 30 K-1 students or just, you have 30 kindergarten students at He Dog?
Yes.
Ooh.
And that room was only built for 25.
Jeez.
So what we do is we have an extra, we have an extra clashing down in that wing. So what we did was we took, rearranged the schedule and broke those kids into two groups of 15. So while the teacher's working with 15 kids here with instruction, they might be doing independent stations across the hall. Because other than that, they were basically sitting.
Stuck in one room?
And that's, K-2 is the largest wing at He Dog.
Jeez.
Yeah, so we're up to, we left last year, we ended at like 170 something students and we're at 206 now. Any questions? Any questions, boy?
No, thank you, Roberta.
You are very welcome.
Hey, Leslie.
Michelle?
Any questions? Any questions for Roberta?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Karen, I have a definitely word that I was going to do.
Did you guys have questions on that? We were going to review and.
I looked at it all.
Did we look at it? Did you have any? Okay, if you don't have any questions, then that's fine. That works for me.
I'll move too.
Questions, Michelle or Sage?
Nope.
Krista's report last.
The assessment report from that, that I gave you guys last year.
She does have a copy, right?
Yeah, I have another copy if you'd like. You can always, uh, set up a time, come meet with me or email me and call me a call. If you do have any questions you want to ask about the data, I'd be happy to walk you through anything that's in here. All right, thanks. My niece forgot to let my dogs out, so I gotta go home. Yeah, they've been in for a while.
I'll move on to consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Yes. I can't hear her, is she vote yes?
Michelle, you said yes, right?
Yes.
Seven two, bid package. Mr. Chad.
Move.
Oh, I read through it.
Well, obviously you can see the dollar amounts that are involved. I've provided all the level of detail of the contract that you guys can look at. Um, a lot of information there that, what I tried to do with the last page of the sheet is to show how we are actually funding this. Remember about 70% of this dollar amount is being funded through some federal programs that came out due to COVID, S R two and S R three, and I tried to break that out. So overall, while everyone in the state and across the country are dealing with inflation and dealing with, uh, a hard time trying, trying to find contractors in order to build, I feel very good that we're able to come across the full package. Um, and I tried to break it out, you know, prior to COVID, could we have built Rosebud Elementary for, for $12 million? The answer is no. So that's what our dollars that we're allocating to that is now. And I wanted to try to portray that to you guys. So that's just on the last page of that, that I provided for documentation. I'll second.
By Melissa, second by Sage. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Oh, seven four.
Move.
Thousand dollar donation to our prom activities. Second. By Melissa.
I'll second.
Linda already did.
Linda seconded, Michelle. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Eight one, resignation of RJ DeLeon.
Okay, I've got that letter. Um, the administration that worked with RJ wrote a letter that, um, wrote, wanted to delve in myself, so I printed it for you guys for tonight. He was the gentleman that came, he came on the committee night to speak to me. Oh, yes.
I'll move to accept with waiving liquidation damages.
Anybody else have a comment?
No.
I'll second.
By Melissa. Second by Linda. All in favor?
Yes.
Wave, to wave them without.
Yes.
He did tell me when he talked to me Thursday night and handed me the resignation that he does want to come back to Todd County, so that's good. I've heard so many wonderful things about him and, and his teaching of music, so.
I have too.
Pretty well made executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
Move.
Move by Melissa.
Personnel?
Yes.
Michelle second.
Did you second, Michelle? Michelle?
I just, I voted with the previous.
This is second.
I'll second the executive session.
And I'm all in favor?
Yes.
Going to exec at 7:02.
Yes.
Five zero.
Let's look at the other end, we have something to leave. And we have things we are making our own, board appreciation. We have treats at the other end for you for all you do, all the work you do. And I have a certificate for you.
Well, that's nice.
That's nice.
Thank you.